Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our council meeting. Today is August 27th. Before we get into the agenda, we have a very special certificate presentation by Ms. Holland.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Ko'oli'i and I actually are offering this today. It's unfortunate that we have to do this at all. It's to honor Bianco Koko Kani'a Li'i that I just adore and love so much. We have his Ohana here today, and I thought this was such a great opportunity to show our respect and love for him and his dedication to Kauai and music and his involvement in our community. And so I'm just going to go ahead and read the certificate that we have here and then offer them the opportunity to speak, right? So, "The Kauai County Council offers its deepest condolences to the family and friends of the late Koko Kani'a Li'i, a longtime resident of Kauai. Koko was born in Kalihii, Oahu, to Roger Moikeha and Rena Kani'a Li'i. Surrounded by musical diversity, in 1979, Koko played a gig at the Poipu Beach Hotel, and he decided to make Kauai his home after meeting his Kauai Ohana. Koko had a lifetime of unwavering dedication and exceptional contributions to the Hawaiian music and entertainment industry. He has enriched the cultural landscape of Hawaii through his remarkable talent as a musician, his leadership as co-founder of Kanak Atak Entertainment, and his steadfast commitment to community service as a Kahului educator and mentor. Koko was also a decorated Vietnam veteran, an honored combat drill instructor who also served as a guiding force in the Kauai arts community for over five decades. Uplifting generations through his performances, teachings, and cultural advocacy. His legacy continues to inspire and preserve the spirit of aloha across our islands. The Kauai County Council expresses its heartfelt sympathy to Koko's Ohana, including his wife Julie, as well as the many friends and colleagues, and wishes him comfort in the knowledge that his legacy will continue to live on in the many hearts that he has touched." I just will add just quickly that getting to work with Uncle Koko for about a decade, the amount of people that were moved, locals that love him, but the people that would come back, and out of everyone, where's the guy with the gray hair? Of everybody wanting to see Uncle Koko, and he just has left such an incredible legacy behind, and so many people just love him, all the people, he's married, all the people that he's performed for, he will be very sorely missed, and you know, I'm so sorry. I know how horrible this must be these times, and I just wanted to honor you both and Uncle, and just give you guys this certificate on behalf of all of us, and Vice Chair.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that for me, Koko is the truest example of what it is to be Hawaiian and of what aloha truly means and what aloha is. I will always remember his laughter and his smile. I think he always brought joy to everyone he came in contact with. And so, I mean, of course, we honor him. What a wonderful, beautiful Hawaiian man, with a beautiful name too. It's all right there in his name.
Do you want to say anything else? No, go ahead. I don't think I can.
Well, I want to just share, I've known Koko, Uncle Koko, but when his hair wasn't silver, you know, and when he maybe had a few little fluts in there, I don't remember, but he has always been so loving and helpful, and I'm sure he's got the capacity to have a bad temper, I just have never seen it. And I usually see him where he's just lifting up anybody from any, any background. It's been in event after event and just part of our community, right down there in Honolulu where I, where I think of him the most. I know he emcees for things all over the island, but he was a feature in our town, just helping, that's, that's what I saw, you know, just, just his whole presence was very kind and uplifting, and so, you know, he's a wonderful man, and his spirit will stay with us, and I, I was really kind of shocked, I didn't know he had something wrong with him, but he, I was very saddened to see that he had passed, and it will be a big gap in our community, a big gap, and so I just extend to you my love and support, and like, I didn't know you were his sister, and so that's been a wonderful thing right there, so.
I'm just, we're honored, the family's honored that you're honoring him in this way. It's just, it has been, it was a big shock, we didn't expect that this was gonna, we thought we had more time, is what I've been saying, and of course, he's going to leave a big gap. It's in the music entertainment field, that was his whole life, that was his passion, and I know that he's going to be remembered well for that, and that was really important to him, and of course, his, sharing his Kanaka culture was one of the most important things to him too. He was very proud to be a Kanaka and never missed an opportunity to share. When he started to talk to anybody, I would always, and they would ask him questions, I would say, "Do you want the long answer, how much time do you have? Do you want the long answer or the short answer?" Because he could go on for days, and many of you have talked to him and know that he could talk to anybody about anything, and especially his culture, he was, he was very proud of that.
Was he really the drummer for Don Ho?
He was. Yeah, he was after the service, well, actually, he started his professional career at 15. He was in a band called The Five Psychos. This was on Oahu, he went to Castle High School, and they played off the military bases in the Pacific at 15. They had a chaperone, they had a man, Bob Mitchell, who kind of managed them. And then the service called, and then when he came back, he went to work for IVA and was working at the Garden Bar at the Hilton Hawaiian Village, and Don Ho came calling, and he asked twice, and Koko said no because he wasn't, how do you say no to Don Ho? But he wasn't ready, he didn't feel like he, he was ready, and then he finally, finally did, two years with him, yeah, so. And then, and he played with a lot of the showroom acts in Waikiki until 79, when he moved here, and fell in love with Kauai, and of course, met Ohana, so much Ohana from the North Shore, and decided to stay, so I'm thankful he did, how we met.
Me too.
And then Tahiti Nui was such a big, eight years he and Daryl played with Kanak Atak at Tahiti Nui, which was, you know, really unheard of, two nights a week, and that's where you knew him.
Yes, the only one that got me up to dance a lot.
Never, I don't think there will ever be another place like Tahiti Nui, that was really, really special, and thankfully, I've got a lot of footage of them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we're going to be celebrating him in November, and it'll go in the newspaper.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, November 14th.
Alright.
Can I just ask how you met Koko?
At Tahiti Nui. No, that's when we first started dating, but I knew him from before, just being around. He and Daryl and Norman started playing at Side Out after the hurricane, and that's where I met him. And then I worked at Honolulu School as a PCNC person, and I asked him to come in as part of a group, come and read to the kids, and so I kind of, we were in and out of each other's lives, and then that fateful night at Tahiti Nui, when he and Daryl and Norman, they were auditioning on the big side, and yeah, anyway, that's when we were...
Julie and I have known each other since Honolulu School, we both taught there together.
Yeah, and we would have celebrated 30 years in October, 30 years married, yeah.
You know, Koko, he is such a presence, he was a Marana, and his background, his education, his Kahului, you know, the whole background of him. And I remember, I was talking to him, and his hair, yeah, solid, but his presence in, whether it be with Keke, whether it be with Puna, whether it be in the community, and just his musical background, I mean, I remember all of that. He was just a presence, and he did it with aloha. He did it kind of, you know, upset sometimes, but we had that discussion, but for the most part, he was really, he had a presence, and people loved him because of that kind of Manaho and knowledge he had for the Hawaiian culture and for music, but he also had that love and aloha that was so important, so. Parakoto was solid, so thank you, and blessings to you and Ohana.
Mahalo. Mahalo.
Yeah, I just want to send my sincere condolences to the family, and speaking about things to remember him about, he collaborated with Dr. Carolyn on pretty much my kids and my own favorite book, which was Where Are My Slippers?, A Book of Colors.
What?
It's a really good book, Dr. Carolyn made. I don't want to memorize it and say it on camera because I may have a few of them wrong, but I'll share it with you, it's a really good book. He's on the back cover, I think he signed all the colors in the end on the CD, so.
Oh my gosh, wow, that's amazing.
But it's, yeah, our kids' absolute favorite book.
Oh, very nice, thanks for sharing.
Do we want to take a, I mean, do you want to just give the certificate?
Can I say a few words?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a picture.
And then, okay.
We'll definitely take a picture. Thank you for being here, and both of you, and I definitely want to hear from the sister at some point, but, you know, it, it's sad, and it's heartbreaking, but, you know, this is a very small celebration of his life, I mean, November, I can only, I hope he got the stadium, because I don't know where, where, where is, I mean, it's, that's just going to be massive, you know, Kipukai said it best, he's the true definition of Hawaiian. I've known Koko for a long time, and, and I can't remember where we were, but we started talking about the military, and, and I, I didn't know he was a veteran until that day, and, and obviously, much respect for that, but he, he's just special, he's, he's, he's different, and, you know, his voice is just unique, everybody talk about his hair, that was unique too, but his voice and that smile, and, and his ability to be engaging, and I, I've never seen him upset. I mean, and we've discussed issues where he had, he was concerned, but never was he, it didn't seem like he was angry, it was just, I'm sure you, I'm sure you, married to him 30 years probably, saw little episodes of frustration, but I, I just never got that from him, and, and all he wanted to do was offer advice, and that's just him, whether it was politics or football, it didn't matter, and, and he was always so willing to share, and that is special, you know, he, he's a legend, and he's not just a Kauai legend, he's a Hawaii legend, state legend, and we lost a lot of, a lot of celebrities recently, none of which I knew personally, but, you know, you feel that, you feel that, that puka that's left when these people leave. Koko, Koko's puka is huge.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that will ever be filled by anyone. He, he's just a special guy, I, I wrote some things down, most of which everyone had said, I think, you know, as an entertainer, he was so talented, and, and even in, in his entertaining, he was conveying that message of aloha. That was just him, he was just Mr. Aloha, and I still having a hard time believing that he's gone, I mean, because I expect to see him pop up someplace, and, and I know I won't. I mean, we will at some point, I'm not rushing that, but.
Yes.
He's going to be missed, and you, yeah, I mean, I see him right in you, it's, it's a, yeah, special, special, so.
You can come right next to him.
Yeah, we definitely want to hear from you, yeah, you probably know Koko.
She can bring her chair up.
Thank you.
He can just come up so we can get you on the mic so the public can hear.
She can scoot her chair forward.
He may have been the baby in our family, but he was the light of my parents, because my parents expected a lot from us, but his was a talent that was not hidden, and it was a daily thing, and there were six of us, and I'm the eldest, and he was the baby, and he brought out things that my parents had wished that we other five had, but he held it all, and we're very proud of him for as long as he's been with us, and we thank you very much for your recognition.
Well, our condolences, obviously, to the entire Ohana and, and the friends and families, it's, like I said, you know, he's a legend, and he will be missed, so thank you.
Mahalo.
Thank you. We'll, we'll, we want to, if you want, we can take a picture with the certificate right under the seal, if that's okay. We'll take a short break.
Okay, we have a couple of public. Madam Clerk, can you read the first notice for Bill number twenty-nine seventy, please?
Notice, sir, by given that the Koi County Council holds a public hearing on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, at eight-thirty a.m. or soon thereafter in the council chambers, four-three-nine-six Rice Street, room two-oh-one in the historic county building in Leihue. On Bill number two-nine-seven-zero, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B-two-zero-two-five-dash-nine-oh-five, as amended relating to the operating budget of the county of Kauai, state of Hawaii for the fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, by revising the amounts estimated in the Public Access Open Space Natural Resources Preservation Fund. This is for the Hanapepe Monument, uh, two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. This bill proposes to appropriate two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars from the Public Access Open Space Natural Resources Preservation Fund for the design and installation of a monument on county-owned land in Hanapepe, Kauai, Hawaii, further identified as TMK number four-one-eight-zero-zero-eight-zero-six-five and four-one-eight-zero-zero-eight-zero-seven-one.
Okay, is there any registered speakers?
Chair, we do have a regis-, two registered speakers. First registered speaker is Evelyn Basmilo, followed by Kealoha Takahashi.
And, and before we start the testimony, I know we received some written testimonies as well with a request to um, restore the original amount. Uh, the reason why it's, it's reduced is that was at the request of the administration who, who has informed us that that is the money required for the monument. So, just want the public to understand that the council is supportive of whatever it will take to uh, get that monument erected. But the, the amended amount was, was based on administration's new information. So, that's why it's a lower amount. So with that, we can start. And, and I see a lot of new faces. So uh, you have three minutes to testify on the first round. You'll see that light bar turn yellow. You have thirty seconds. When it turns red, your time is up. And then once we go through all the, the speakers, the testifiers, then you'll be able to come up for a second round for a second three minutes.
And push this button right here. So it turns green. Sorry.
That's passion.
Good morning. Uh, the Honorable Chair Mel Raposo and the fellow members of the council, county council. My name is Evelyn Basmilo, a resident of Leihue. And I'm currently the president of the Kauai Design Club. Our organization was established in nineteen-eighty-five promoting unity, culture, strength in the community. Out of the sixteen Filipino labor workers who perished, fifteen were from the same region in the southern Philippines where we originally came from. On behalf of our members, I am deeply grateful to you, the council members, the Open Space Commission, and the rest of the county agencies for recognizing the hard work of the Filipino plantation workers who courageously stood up for their rights. The bravery of those men who tragically died, including the sheriffs who answered call of duties, did not go in vain. Over a century later, the recognition of their sacrifices is a long overdue tribute. It makes us reflect as we celebrate Labor Day that the value of labor rights is not just policies. It is a living legacy of sacrifice, sacrifices, courage, and hope. The ultimate loss of life of the twenty souls cannot be equated with any monetary value. With this, we are appealing to this council that the original amount of three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand be restored in addition to the parcels of land dedicated as a tribute to those who perished. Once again, our depth of gratitude to all of you for your kind consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. No, you can, you can leave it. Okay.
Next speaker is Kealoha Takahashi.
Aloha, Council Chair Raposo and members of the council. I'm Kealoha Takahashi. I have a personal interest in this monument. It was my great-grandfather Moses Kuah, known as Moke Kuah, who was one of the sheriffs that died. And as she eloquently said, he wasn't the only one, but twenty others. But I want to share with you an article that was written about my grand, great-grandfather in nineteen-twenty-four and just a snippet of who he was. Moke Kuah, yes, Moke's name is there. The Moke who helped us with our horses when we were little children, who taught us how to settle and to bridle them, who cinched the girth because we were too little or too small to reach. The Moke who took care of us on cattle and pig hunting expeditions, who taught us to be quiet, speechless, so as not to frighten the wary game, who warned against the thoughtless snapping of a twig, as against the thoughtless chattering and whistling of careless children. The Moke who gave up his sure shot at a wild pig, so, or goat, so that a youngster would have a chance. He knew the joy at a twelve-year-old who could take home a skin that he had tagged himself. And the last part of the article it read, had all traits of a true Hawaiian, a mighty teller of tales, with a true dramatic instinct and poetic feeling of his race was Moke. But his gentleness to children, his unassuming dignity, and his jovial laughter and truths of a true son of Hawaii were always the companions of his skill in roping, hunting, and telling of tales. I said before, a typical Hawaiian panola. This is the Moke whose name was read on that list. Moke Kuah, shot over the heart. Shot not once, but with his chest peppered, with the wounds of many revolver shots, he died. He is but one of the four brave men who gave their lives at Hanapepe last Tuesday morning for the protection of the island that they loved and for its people. They died fearlessly, gamely, as they had lived, and for this, we honor them. And so I hope this, by this little tidbit about my great-grandfather, that you too would consider to honoring those who died, who gave their lives that day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair. Next.
For the registered speakers.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify that did not register? If not, thank you. And that public hearing is closed. Can you read the notice for twenty-nine-seven-one, please?
Bill number two-nine-seven-one, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B-two-zero-two-five-dash-nine-oh-six, as amended relating to the capital budget of the county of Kauai, state of Hawaii for the fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, by revising the amounts estimated in the Public Access Open Space Natural Resources Preservation Fund, CIP. This is for the Hanapepe Parcel Monument Improvement, two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. This bill proposes to appropriate two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars from the Public Access Open Space Natural Resources Preservation Fund, CIP, for the design and installation of a new Hanapepe Parcel Monument Improvement Project in Hanapepe, Kauai, Hawaii, further identified as TMK numbers four-one-eight-zero-zero-eight-zero-six-five and four-one-eight-zero-zero-eight-zero-seven-one.
Anyone registered, no registered speakers? Is anyone in the audience wishing to testify? This is the companion bill. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Um, when does that come up? Um. September third for committee. So this will be in the, uh, in the, in our committee meeting on September third, and then we'll be up for final vote on the next council meeting, which is the seventeenth, September seventeenth. Okay? Uh, with that, uh, call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Here.
Councilmember Cowden.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Present.
Councilmember Kanishiro.
Present.
Councilmember Kualii.
Present.
Council Chair Raposo.
Here.
Second present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Move.
Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Your next item are the minutes on page two, the minutes of the following meetings of the council, July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five council meeting, and August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five public hearing regarding Bill number two-nine-six-one, two-nine-six-two, two-nine-six-three, two-nine-six-four, two-nine-six-five, two-nine-six-six, two-nine-six-seven, and Bill number two-nine-six-eight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item are items on the consent calendar for receipt, C-two-zero-two-five-dash-one-eight-one, one-eight-two, and on page three, one-eight-three.
Move to receive.
Okay.
Move and seconded. Any discussion or public testimony?
I just have a little bit of discussion.
Go ahead.
On um, one-eight-two, I just wanted to really acknowledge and thank our treasurer and our finance department. Um, I went through this and I just want to recognize the correct trend. You know, our debt is going down and I'm very grateful for that. I'm very grateful for the fact that we have used cash vest and knowledge of our treasurer, that um, we've been able to use our money accurately and, and wisely. And I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, as a NACO member, I wa-, I watch these things that we have. And today we had the big shift in funding. And um, so there's a series on that. And there's a trillion dollars worth of federal funding that's going to shift to county responsibilities in the next ten years. So, the wisdom and the trend that we have in our finance department, I just want to honor them and our treasurer. It's so important that we're being wise right now. And I try and watch what's coming up, you know, relative to the cash management and the changes in our financial responsibilities. So um, good job so far. I'm happy to share anything I'm learning too. I have a lot of faith in our treasurer, but it's um, of value for us as council. So I try and be on top of it, of all these um, funds that are going to shift out and everywhere, including like the fire department. You know, a lot of people that are in the room here, federal funding is going to start to, to dry up. So um, thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing none? The motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
This is communication, C-two-zero-two-five-dash-one-eight-four, communication from the Director of Economic Development requesting council approval of the indemnification provision and defense clause contained in section eight of the general terms and conditions of the facilities use agreement with the University of Hawaii for the Kauai, for the use of the Kauai Community College Fine Arts Auditorium and the county's participation in the Kauai Food Access Summit scheduled from four-thirty p.m. to nine p.m. on Saturday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, to address food access issues on Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony?
Yes, please.
With that, I will suspend the rules. Mr. Seikos.
For the record, Lonny Seikos, uh, I'd normally, I try and research all of these things at home. However, I freely admit that I don't have any idea what the Kauai Food Access Summit is. This would be an excellent opportunity for either the council or whoever it is in the admin, that is the county's participation in this event. If they could inform the public as to what this event is about, whether or not the public will be invited. And uh, thank you very much for this, but what's it about? And please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other members in the audience wishing to testify? If not, I'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, Ms. Holland?
Thank you so much. I also, um, I'm really excited about this event and I did want to speak to it a little bit. I was hoping that, um, so the food access to answer the testifier's question, it's really about food security, about getting healthy food to people, um, about exactly what it sounds like, access to food. Um, and it's Malama Kauai is hosting this event and it's a really a wonderful event. Um, there's two incredible documentaries that are being shown on September twentieth that, that we're approving today. Um, and I really strongly recommend people joining. I pulled up the trailer and I was wondering, Chair, if it would be okay if we could play the trailers for the documentaries, if you're open to it?
Um, you know, the topic is just the indemnification agreement.
It is, it is a great um, opportunity just for people to attend, but Jason Malama is in one of them, if it, if it makes anybody excited, but Common Ground and um, uh, Ku Kalau, uh, the two documentaries that are playing.
Common Ground and Ku Kalau. So it's open to the public and there are ads out on social media.
Yeah, and you can book your tickets to them. And I can, I'll send around just so everybody sees what it is. And yeah, strong recommendation to attend. It's a really great uh, event.
And perhaps you can put it on our, our social media page.
Yeah, I'll email it off to you.
So it is open to the public, September twentieth, from four-thirty till nine. Free?
I think it, I don't think it's free. Uh, it comes with food too. I believe it's a food and movie night event.
According to the, the memo, it is a locally sourced dinner followed by the film screenings and a Q and A from the filmmaker.
Yeah.
As I don't have information on the topic. Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C-two-zero-two-five-dash-one-eight-five, communication from Council Chair Raposo, transmitting for council consideration, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter sixteen, Kauai County Code nineteen-eighty-seven, as amended, relating to the traffic code, creating necessary definitions for emerging, emerging technologies and accompanying a new section to chapter sixteen that addresses electric bicycles or e-bikes and their safe allowable use on public roads thereby reducing the frequency and severity of e-bike related incidents.
Move to receive.
Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony? With that, I will suspend the rules. And for your information, we're going to be, I'm going to be asking for a deferral on the bill. Um, we've got some housekeeping issues that we got to deal with after our meeting yesterday. So I will be asking for a deferral, but we'll definitely get your comments.
For the record, Lonny Seikos, thank you, Chair. I had some technical observations about the bill, so I won't address any of that. But thank you very much. And I would concur that the bill is a good start, but it doesn't solve some of the problems that exist. And that's going to take lawyers to figure out the language. Thank you.
And I'd be more than happy to get your input on the bill as well prior to introducing it or coming up. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hark?
I heard you say, Chair, it's going to be deferred?
Yes, it will.
Okay, so then you're going to be doing oral work on it?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm glad that it was introduced. There is, um, on HNN, there was not too far back, maybe a month or two, they did a whole article on the problem of the, of these e-bikes. I call them toys. And it's, again, it's on HNN and I would recommend that every council member watch it. This is a serious issue.
Called toys?
Excuse me?
Never mind.
Anyhow, uh, the video I can send, and I think I will send it to every council member uh, through your tests. And you watch this and it's horrifying. Onahu, they are having these type of incidents where these children are being injured on these bikes daily. And they speak to the ambulance drivers, uh, you know, and the different entities, the agencies that are involved. Um, I, I have video, but for liability issues, I can't use it just on my street alone. And so I have a lot to say about this bill. And as it is now, again, I appreciate that it's been introduced, but it's not adequate. I spoke to the High Hawaii Bicycling League on Oahu. I spoke to their president. And I conferred some with Councilman McCowden about this. And he is willing to make a presentation here at council. And I would be very appreciative if maybe Chair, somebody else, maybe Felicia or someone could get this man here and give us a perspective on just how serious that he is. Our K K are being injured, some of them for life. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll call a meeting back to order. And we did receive testimony from the Hawaii Bicycling League who uh, supports the bill. Again, there's some technical fixes we got to do and I'd rather do it prior to the introduction, before the public hearing and not after the public hearing. So that's the reason. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C-two-zero-two-five-dash-one-eight-six, communication from the Director of Finance requesting council approval of the indemnification provision and unspecified future obligations contained in the memorandum of understanding with the state of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources to access restroom and storage facilities at Haina State Park for the installation and maintenance of a photovoltaic electrical system and internet satellite and Wi-Fi system and appliances for the county lifeguards.
Move to approve.
Second.
You have questions?
Uh.
They're here.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'll suspend.
Very simple, very simple question.
I'll suspend the rules. I'll suspend the rules.
Hi. So this is basically, we're installing, I'm assuming Starlink? Or is it a different, just so our people at the end of the road have active communication with the fire department and the rest of the ocean safety officers? Is that correct?
Good morning. Dell Sherman, IT Manager for the County of Kauai. You're correct. It would be a Starlink antenna and associated Wi-Fi gear. It would primarily benefit our lifeguards and public safety, but the public as well at that location.
And so is this the first Starlink that we're putting in any of our locations?
I think the county has used Starlink for other public safety types of deployments. This will be probably the first one that's used for more of a public service type of scenario.
Okay, and this is just an indemnification for you guys to get in there and do the work? This, this bill, I mean, this communication?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll keep my questions simple.
Thank you. Any other questions for the administration? If not, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Mr. Sykos?
For the record, Lonny Sykos, I realize that in different government entities, inter individual relationships with each other, it's very, very common to have the phrase unspecified future obligations. However, unspecified future obligations could be a bottomless pit for the county. We don't, if we don't know what they could be, we don't know what we're getting ourselves into. And so as an example, because we own a helicopter, we spend million, millions of dollars a year doing rescues on state land, which is the responsibility of DLNR, not the county. But because we have a reciprocity agreement, it is impossible for us to put pressure on the state to provide the services in their parks that they're legally required to have. So the state has absolute obligation to take care of the people that they entice to go to state parks, but we end up footing the bill. And so my only hesitancy about this is what kind of future financial consequence could we end up with? Because I sat through every single meeting buying the helicopter, and never once did anybody say we were going to do the state's job for them and pay for it with county money. My other question is, when we put that Starlink in, if someone is out there with a cell phone, will the public be able to use the Starlink? Those are my two observation questions. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Let me just try to answer the last question first. And Dell, if I'm incorrect, you can come up and correct me, but I don't believe this is going to be a public access Wi-Fi hotspot. This is quite, okay, I guess I misspoke, so with that, I'll suspend the rules.
Good morning again. Dell Sherman, IT Manager, for the record. So just to add some additional information to the purpose that this could be used for, it's not a public Wi-Fi in the sense that someone can park themselves outside the comfort station and watch Netflix. It won't support that kind of bandwidth. However, it will serve the public in that an individual with a cell phone who needs to make an emergency call will be able to use Wi-Fi calling, connect to that Wi-Fi system that Starlink supports, and be able to, to make what we'll call it an emergency call. Maybe they need help, maybe other circumstance that requires communication. So it'll serve the public in that sense.
So you're saying if someone calls nine one one, the auto phone will automatically recognize the Starlink signal? How, how would the phone know to use the Starlink signal?
So it won't be automatic. An individual would have to set up their phone to allow for that. So all of the modern smartphones support Wi-Fi calling for the most part. To enable it, though, you'd have to connect your phone to Wi-Fi. There'll be an obviously advertised free public Wi-Fi that they'll see on their phone that they can connect to. And then, once connected, they would be able to call nine one one. The disadvantage with that, though, is it'll report whatever address they've pre-programmed into their account, which typically is their home address. So the, the location info won't work quite as smoothly, but the GPS location should. So the dispatcher.
I'm a little confused. So Starlink, like any other Wi-Fi, I'll just call it a hotspot, requires a password, right?
Typically, a Wi-Fi is secured with password, but there's a way to advertise a Wi-Fi spot with no password so that you can just automatically connect, no authentication, just zip right in and go.
But if you set it up that way, so if I go to Kaiana State Park and I take my phone and I take Wi-Fi, will that Starlink show up with a, with a, with a unsecured opportunity to use that Wi-Fi?
It will.
Okay, then, then there will be people using the Wi-Fi to watch Netflix at the park.
So we anticipated that, and the way it'll be set up, it will block certain types of services. It will also be bandwidth limited, so watching video would be a painful experience.
Okay. Got it. Ms. Holland?
Yeah, thank you. And what I, I believe you have also provided that just answering the other question relative to unspecified future obligations, when I read this agenda item, it's really just about going in there once or twice, maybe three times, to the storage facility and the restrooms. And it's, it's not an ongoing piece, but if you guys need to go and fix something, you can go and fix it on, on the buildings. But it's, other than that, this isn't ongoing indemnification for all of our emergency system. It's just for you guys entering the buildings.
Yeah, and use of that facility to place some solar panels on the roof and so on. But for anyone who has concerns about, well, what is unspecified? What could this possibly be? If you click the link in the agenda, it'll take you right to the memo that was submitted where all of those are detailed, and you can read exactly what it is we're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hart?
For the record, Bruce Hart, I just have one question. It's, it sounds like some of this, the solar panels and the rest of it, how are we going to protect all of this from vandalism?
Oh, you what?
Vandalism. I mean, I mean, it seems to me that's something we have to address. I mean, we could lose all our equipment to weeks after we install it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll call a me, oh, I'm sorry.
Right, right here. Oh, there we go. Good morning, Joelle Edwards, and I'm speaking as an individual North Shore community. So just this stuff, this right here is, makes us feel really great. As you know, several of us came in when the AT&T Seltar was proposed, and their main proposal was the safety of visitors at Kaiana and K A. And we proposed that there was other technologies. So to see the county come up with a solution when we're already seeing it down there, specifically at my place in Waenihau, where we can now grab satellite, where that's a small area. So I'm just in support of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? I think to simplify this, it's, we're putting county equipment on state building, and this is what it does. It just indemnifies. So we are responsible for the county equipment, not the building, and the state is responsible for the building and not the county equipment. As far as vandalism, Mr. Hart, that's just one of the realities of life, and we can only hope that the community out there will, will, will not damage it. Anyway, motion is to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C two zero two five dash one eight seven. Communication from Councilmember Cowden transmitting for council consideration a bill for an ordinance amending chapter eight, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended, relating to uses in districts effectuating relevant changes to the definitions of family and dwelling unit, thereby preventing potential exploitive and impermissible uses of single-family residences which erode the traditional form and character of neighborhoods.
Move to receive. Okay. The bill will be coming up later, but if anyone wants to testify now, we'll take your testimony now. Seeing none, the motion is to receive. Any discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
On page four, claims. C two zero two five dash one eight eight. Communication from the county clerk transmitting a claim filed against the County of Kauai by Emmanuel Taniguchi for vehicle damage pursuant to section twenty-three point zero six, charter of the County of Kauai. C two zero two five dash one eight nine. Communication from the county clerk transmitting a claim filed against the County of Kauai by Catherine Ledesma for property damage pursuant to section twenty-three point zero six, charter of the County of Kauai. And C two zero two five dash one nine zero. Communication from the county clerk transmitting a claim filed against the County of Kauai by Hoikee Community, Kauai Community Television for property damage pursuant to section twenty-three point zero six, charter of the County of Kauai.
Move to refer to the county attorney for disposition and report back as necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item are your committee reports from your committee on planning, CRPL two zero two five dash zero nine and CRPL two zero two five dash ten. And on page five, I'm sorry, and on page five, CRPL two zero two five dash eleven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is a resolution. Resolution number two zero two five dash thirty-four. Resolution confirming mayoral appointment to the Board of Review for Carl Miyake.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Conishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuoli.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is resolution number two zero two five dash three five. Resolution establishing a no parking zone along Kukui Street in the vicinity of its intersection with Ulu Street, Kauai Hall District, County of Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. With that, I'll suspend the rules. Can someone come up and, I'm assuming, planning or someone? Who, who's for public works?
Troy.
Morning, Council Chair, Councilmembers. Troy Tanigawa, County Engineer.
Okay, if you could just give us a real brief, I mean, we, we have it here. We see it. I'm not sure if, can we even put this up? Is it possible to put this, this up? I'm sorry, I should have asked you guys earlier, but anyway, I, we can see the drawing here, the public doesn't. So you're, this is at the Ulu, the junction of Ulu and Kukui Street?
That's correct. There, for the past, I guess for some time already, there's been vehicle parking at that intersection. As you come up from Ulu Street onto Kukui Street, the site business was, you know, significantly impaired by vehicle parking on the right side of, on the south side of Kukui Street. Any vehicles turning off Ulu Street onto Kukui Street had, you know, basically no site business because of cars. And, you know, I guess there were some issues with the vegetation also along the fence line and that boundary. And so this proposed parking restriction will mitigate, will prevent parking on, in, along that shoulder and mitigate the site, site distance issues.
Ms. Holland?
I'm just asking a couple of questions to be able to assist listeners.
Sorry, I'm going to put up the power point, but the mics are going to go off.
Okay.
So that parcel four dash one, three, four, five, Kohiho Highway, that's the old Roxy Theater, right?
Correct.
Just so people know. And there's the Dolphin Touch, I think, right across and what has been the Computer Hospital. So those businesses that are in that area, I'm sure you've communicated with all of them.
Yes.
Yes, and they're probably good with it.
We've had barricades and traffic cones delineating, already delineating that section for no parking for some time now. I, I haven't had any calls or complaints.
Okay, I mean, it makes good sense. I, I'm very familiar with that little intersection there, and yeah, it, it is difficult if there's cars on it.
Yes, and you know, during that time when it was, it was unmonitored parking, you know, we had, we did have concerns about many close calls that, you know, fortunately didn't result in any traffic accidents, but, you know, that's something that's now mitigated with this no parking restriction.
In the Kapaa Art Night, that whole area can get congested. You know, there's all the cars that park everywhere, so I would think that's particularly problematic then. And even more important, to be able to see pedestrians and other cars.
Thank you. Ms. Holland?
Thank you. Nice to see you, Director. I'm wondering, is there any proposal for increased parking in any area along there? Because I, I did talk to some of the people that rent some of the businesses on the corner there, and it can be quite problematic on that corner as you come around Kukui, just pass Lace It Up. There's cars that sometimes park there, too, on the shoulder, and I see the kids coming down, but I know that they're all like people that work there. They're trying to kind of figure out parking where there's not really a lot of parking options for those businesses. So kind of wondering if this is just phase one, and there's going to be some more adjustments to that section, because it is a pretty dangerous turn there. The other feedback that I got was the crosswalk, that people need to, that there may be some sort of measures to slow people down as they approach that crosswalk or that intersection, because it, I have seen a lot of close calls there as well. So thank you guys very much for working on this. I think it's a good part, too.
Morning, Chair, Members of Council. Mike Comol, Chief of Engineering Division, for the record. Yeah, we have a, a project called Kukui Street, All Ahead of Road Improvements Project, something like that, and it includes Kukui Street from Ulu Highway around the curve over to the roundabout on Waenihau. And it's in.
You know, because we're, we're strengthened in the no parking resolution, I would recommend or suggest that we, that, that project that you're talking about, we have that discussion in the committee, so we can, we can have a free discussion to talk about all the elements of that area, because this is specific to that no parking zones. But I'd be more than happy to have that discussion, because I think that whole Kukui area, that whole Kapaa area is, is congested. So I'd be more than happy to.
And all I was going to say is, that, this, that project will be looking at all the issues that the council.
Yeah, perfect.
Holland, it's going to be addressed. And I don't want to go into details on that now at all. Just, just letting you know that it's going to be addressed.
Thank you.
So yeah, we'll, we'll, as soon as you guys can get a presentation together, we'll entertain it here in the Public Works Committee. Does that sound good?
Thank you.
Sounds good.
I'd love to do it today, but.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't want to do it today. I'm just letting you know that it's, it's something we are addressing through another project.
Yeah, you know, not, not too many people are, are interested in this no parking zone, but if we're going to talk about the traffic plan for Kapaa, I think the public would, there's a lot more people would be interested, so that's why the sunshine always there. Any more questions for the admin? If not, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify on the no parking spots?
For the record, Lonny Sykos, I'm very happy to see the administration moving forward with this. I live in House Lots. First Saturday, if we can, nightmare. Every time I'm down there, I'm at that intersection, like I don't want to see another traffic accident in my life. It's a very, very dangerous place. Again, as they pointed out, there's no field of view. We look very forward to them proceeding through down the street to the left and dealing the left and dealing with the rest of the problem. So, thank you. And thank you, Chair, for helping to move this forward.
For the record, Bruce Hart, I echo what Mr. Psychos said and appreciate it. No parking is, it's an issue everywhere. And there's some places are worse than others. And it's just something we need to tackle. And I've been advocating for it for years. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not a call or meeting back to order. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Cozo.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item is a bill for first reading, proposed draft bill number two nine seven two, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter sixteen, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended relating to the traffic code. This again is for electric bicycles.
I'm gonna be asking for a motion to defer, but can I just get a motion to approve so we can?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then we can do the deferral because I do want to take public testimony if anyone wants to speak on this issue. Mr. Psychos?
For the record, Lonnie Psychos, so, I very much appreciate the effort put into this bill and the fact that it's deferred and other issues are going to be dealt with. As the Chair probably remembers, I rode a moped for many years. So, probably you people don't realize that I went online. It took like three minutes to get to the YouTube site. And then I could increase the speed of my moped by at least thirty percent by clipping a single wire that YouTube told me which wire and which color to cut. And my bike is from Japan and is all pieced together with parts, as most of these Japanese models are. So, like, I couldn't find parts for it, right? I couldn't find anything for it on the internet except the instructions on how to cut the speed regulator. So, I just watched in Honolulu, the Honolulu Police Department bought this device, that they take the electric bike and stick it on the device and then turn it on and crank it up. And so, it's the tire spin, it doesn't go anywhere because it's on these rollers. But it tells the police department both what the electrical output of the bike is as well as its speed over ground. And so, even when you make this regulation about, like, we add gas power, twenty-five cc or whatever the number is for kilowatts, it's like irrelevant because you can take wire cutter and increase the thing by thirty percent just by snipping a wire. So, the speed limits and power limits are based on a non-altered product. Once you can alter the product, you can do it legally because there's no legal restraint otherwise. And the problem with doing that is you can't beat the brake system up. So, if I took my roughly thirty mile an hour motor scooter and did what my friends did, clipped the wire, put dome pistons in it, whatever you want to do to beef up the horsepower, now you can't stop the machine. Or not safely because it's going faster than the brakes were designed for. So, one of the problems here is about modified vehicles and something that appears to be a legal bike is actually illegal because it's been modified. Also point out the thing about having to wear a helmet, right? You put a nine hundred ninety-nine dollar fine if the chin strap's not fastened. Wearing helmets, like, my father was a safety engineer. And so, he argued against helmets for motorcycle riders.
Hang on. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, yeah, I gotta, I gotta.
Somebody else?
Somebody else.
Well, for the record, Bruce Hart, again, this is an issue I've been dealing with on a personal level for a long time. I think when you, council members really get into it, I mean, I was rereading the article I referred to. You're talking serious injuries to not only the riders but to pedestrians. I'll just give you one example. I walk from the Luthuli Library over uptown because I enjoy walking and doing things, you know, that way. I've had these bicycles, these electric bicycles pass me going fast enough with a person on it heavy enough that if I'd have stepped to the side and he'd have ran into me, I could be injured for life, seriously. And so, the riding up on the sidewalks, cutting through parking lots, in and out of cars. I have videos of them riding this way. We have to do something, folks. Council members, we really have to do something. And so, it's gonna be tough because you're gonna be talking to the county attorney extensively. This is really difficult to write law for and it's difficult to enforce. We're not gonna be able to tie up KPD chasing little gangs of kids, you know, doing this day and night. So, I don't know how much you're gonna do. But I am willing to work with any council member, including Chair, Public Safety Head, any of you. I'm willing to just be a gopher, run, do whatever I can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Psychos?
For the record, Lonnie Psychos, I don't remember the exact speed, but it wasn't much. It was like thirty-five, forty miles an hour. If you're on a motorcycle wearing a helmet and you lay the bike down, you crash, and you're not wearing a helmet, you're probably, if you get killed, it probably would be from head injury. If you're wearing a helmet and crashed the bike at forty miles an hour, you probably won't die of a head injury, but you're at very high risk of dying of blunt force trauma. If you're going fifty miles an hour, it don't matter what you're wearing, right? You're gonna get seriously injured. And so, within this bill, my point in this is, when these bikes go more than thirty miles an hour, right, you're on a missile. You're not on a bicycle. And if you're not wearing body armor, if you're wearing some cheap bicycle helmet instead of a high-end motorcycle helmet, you're probably gonna get hurt really bad if you crash. The number one problem in Honolulu with the kids, they fall off the bike, they hit their head on the pavement. That's like, one of the biggest problems is a head injury that either kills you or leaves you with permanent brain damage. So, my suggestion, you look at this, how many kids actually buy the bike and how many of them do their parents buy it? And so, my observation to you guys is, these might be suitable penalties for a child, but they are utterly unsuitable penalties for the adult that put the child on the bike, right? You can give your kid a gun to go hunting in compliance with the law, but the adult is responsible for the outcome of the gun. And so, my observation is, figure out how to hold the parents accountable for what the kids do instead of trying to make the police department do that. So, thank you very much. And again, tip of the hat is a very complex, like everything the government does turns out to be way more complex than it seems like at the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't usually do this. For the record, Bruce Hart, again, I echo what Mr. Psychos has said. And it may seem callous, but it's something we have to face, is that there's gonna be a cost if we don't do something. There's gonna be a huge cost to the county. Everything from our emergency responders having to go to these scenes, KPD, multiple agencies, and then because it's a street accident, they're gonna have to block off traffic, they're gonna have to yada, yada, do the whole thing. And that's gonna cost. Then there's the potential cost, you talked to the county attorney, of liability. Okay? So, I give you an interesting, I was doing research online. And you know, you often see on our streets, and I know they think they're doing good, you'll see a sign, slow kids at play. Okay? Do they realize that they are setting themselves up for a lawsuit? That they are advertising that it's okay to use the street as a playground? This is all over the internet. I'd advise them to take those signs away. The street is not a playground. When I grew up as a boy, if I, if my parents had seen me doing what I see these children doing with permission from their parents, I would have got my butt patted. Good. Okay? It just wasn't accepted. So, the, I agree with Mr. Psychos. I think that the fine and the responsibility is the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Go ahead.
I just have a comment. First of all, I want to say thank you for putting this together. I have worked on this idea myself, looked at what is the standard and the challenges, even as is existing. It's kind of like the fireworks enforcement. Almost everything that happens on the regular is outside the bounds of the existing laws or guidelines or what's here. And in my town, they're pretty impressive little kids doing this. Almost all of them are under fifteen, maybe ten to twelve. And they're like a school of fish swimming through the reef. You know, they don't care what side of the street they're on. They're over the sidewalks, in the parking lots. Two, three kids on a bike, sometimes no lights. So, it's important. And, you know, I have talked with the principal of the school in our community and its parents. It's like, how do we really get the parents to help these kids know how dangerous it is? And I wanted also support, I think it was Mr. Hart who said it, you know, I walk in town all the time and at night, and you can't hear them a lot of times because it's electric. And then they are right next to you and passing you. I've stopped them, made them learn to say, hey, to your left or to your right, but they come so fast. If you were to just to turn around or not pay attention, you'd get hit and you'd get probably very damaged. The walking path in Kilauea is there because a cyclist killed a pedestrian. It wasn't an electric bicycle. But now, those electric bikes are always on that little walking path. So, again, thank you for the effort. And I commend you for trying to thread this needle, but it is an important needle. And I agree, it's parents that need to be deeply involved.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Holland?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I echo the gratitude. I think this is a really important thing. I was kind of going through it in detail yesterday. And I appreciate you taking a leadership role on a county level on this where I feel like the state really kind of hasn't implemented any protective measures. I got a little concerned when we start to talk about, like, I guess what would commonly be called popping a wheelie. Because I guess I was thinking about how, like, that kind of behavior happens on a regular bike, that kind of behavior happens on a motorcycle, all kinds of other things. So, I kind of was getting a little caught up in that last night. Outside of that, you know, I think this is really, really important. And I think really, because this technology is so new, this is kind of a Band-Aid to address the fact that there's not really any structure for the use of these bikes. There really should be like an age limit and a license process if you want to go near a road. Because what I'm finding is that a lot of these people that are riding these bikes around just have no concept of the road rules. The other day when I was pulling out of my driveway, a car stopped to let me go and the e-bike behind it overtook that car. And I could have just nailed that person so hard. It was really, really close. And then, not even last week, I had two kids on e-bikes go flying by. So, I just think they have no concept of the road rules. And we just need tools to be able to enforce those kind of things. So, yeah, thank you very much. I think it's really important and it'll probably save some lives. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, you know, the reason for this is because the state did pass legislation, but the governor vetoed it. And so, you know, we have some authority to regulate e-bikes, unlike other preemptive statutes that we cannot, but this one we can. So, to the limit that we can regulate, that's what this bill is trying to do. There is an age limit on this one. As far as the, the wattage and speed, unless the cops are gonna have that, I think it's called a dynamometer that does all of that stuff. The whole purpose of this is, this is not intended for the police to go do active enforcement. It's probably be complaint driven, I would guess. But, more importantly is sending the message out to the parents that this activity is illegal. I agree with Ms. Holland. I mean, some of these kids, they don't know the rules of the road. So, that's what's happening. And, you know, I had a Harley and I could get out of a dangerous situation real quickly because the power of that Harley was able to get me out of a situation. Mr. Psychos said, in fact, like, you, you had fallen on your moped and I'd stopped to make sure he was okay.
Going three miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
And you grabbed him.
And you had some injuries on that, my friend. You had.
You knocked a pair out.
But, so this is just an attempt to, to really address this situation now and not wait for the state because it, you know, it's just, we're seeing it. I know, I sit in the house lots, man, these things are zooming all over the place. And, and a lot of the times, it's, it's a kid that's under sixteen with a second kid that's riding on the same bike. And that, that is what creates the danger. So, again, I am going to be asking for a deferral because we have some technical issues. And, you know, we'd love to get some input from community. We did get testimony from the Hawaii Bicycling League that supports it. So, I think we're in a good place. So, just some minor technical fixes and we'll have it back on the agenda at that point. So, if there's no more discussion, I would ask for a motion to defer.
Till when? When do you want it deferred to?
To the next council meeting.
Okay. What's that date?
It'll be the.
You just moved to defer and it'll go to the next.
Okay. Move to defer?
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is proposed draft bill number two nine seven three, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter eight, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended relating to uses in districts.
Move to refer to the planning commission?
Second.
Thank you. With that, Ms. Cowden?
I have a presentation to circulate and to place up there. And while that's happening, I will just outline the findings and purpose. The council finds amending the definition of family to include a cap on the maximum number of unrelated individuals permitted to coexist in a single housekeeping unit is appropriate in order to protect the character and safety of residential neighborhoods. At the same time, the council recognizes.
Hang on, Ms. Cowden. You're gonna put this up? Okay, you want to wait so that the people can follow? Is this part of your presentation?
No. I'm just, while we was doing it, I was just saying.
All right.
At the same time, the council recognizes the existence of many non-traditional living arrangements in the community and therefore finds sufficient need to allow up to ten unrelated adults, individuals to exist, coexist within a single dwelling unit. Okay, so now we can do this. This is the proposed draft. So, the next page. We changed the term of dwelling unit. We kind of changed it back somewhat because dwelling unit means any building or portion, or any portion thereof which is designed or intended for occupancy by one family. So, we took out where persons living together or by a person living alone. And provide, providing complete living facilities within the unit for sleeping, recreation, eating. And sanitation facilities include installed equipment for only one kitchen. Any building or portion thereof that contains more than one kitchen shall constitute as many dwelling units as there are kitchens. Like, that's an ADU, an ARU, guest house, provided that an additional dwelling is not a dwelling unit. Okay? And so, this, this change simply means that one family is defined below. Okay, and so, this change simply means that one family is defined below shall occupy a dwelling unit, so this is really pretty extensive. It says, "Family means an individual or group of two or more persons related by blood, adoption or marriage, and living together in a single housekeeping unit is a dwelling unit. Family may also include a group of not more than ten individuals unrelated by blood, adoption, or marriage." And that's because we know these houses are used in a lot of different ways and people crowd together. So, if we look at the history, the definition of family prior to this amendment that we made in 2022, so it was very recent that this change happened. It did say, "Family means an individual or group of two or more persons related by blood, adoption, or marriage, living together in a single housekeeping unit as a dwelling for purpose of this chapter. Family shall also include a group of not more than five unrelated, five individuals unrelated by blood, adoption, or marriage." So, that says, it had been people related plus not more than five. So, did I just get on the wrong page? Okay, so, now, in what we had, we took out all that piece about unrelated members of the family or related, how many. So, the current definition says, "Family means an individual or group of two or more persons living together in a single residential unit." So, two or more is, really, there's no guardrails on it. So, next slide, please. Result to that, I picked this drawing, I mean, this image, I realize this is before it was completely finished, so you don't see the air conditioners that consume those windows, but this is an example of what is now permitted as a thirty-six bedroom, single-family residence within a residential area. The potential for building in residential areas that do not fit the form and character of the existing neighborhood, this could go in any neighborhood. This could cause the loss of sense of community when the definition of family erased the implications of a relationship between members coexisting in a dwelling unit. Excessively large developments with far too many unrelated individuals residing with them under the guise of a single-family residence. I get that there's a desire for this, that's why this building was made. Have something coming up in the future that would address that. But, single-family dwellings are generally permitted in the following districts. So, what we just saw in that image would be permitted as a now over-the-counter application for residential, both R1, R6, all the way up to R6, R10, R20, and for those who don't know what that means, that means, like, R20 is twenty residential units per acre, R6 is six residential units per acre. Resort, commercial, whether it's neighborhood or general, agriculture, or open. So, that house was in an open-zoned place. This could be put anywhere. And so, single-family dwellings do require a use permit in the following districts, in industrial or university. If a parcel's not in a constraint district or a special treatment district and meets the size and density requirements, most properties would qualify for a Class One permit, which means you just go in, you file, and you get it. Okay, next slide, please. What this proposed bill will do, it aligns the definition of dwelling unit so that only one family, whether that consists of an individual or a group is defined, shall occupy residence. And it amends the definition of family by restoring the language to what had been standard prior to 2022, along with a cap of ten unrelated individuals. So, I doubled it. And I know that many houses are filled with employees of someplace. There are a number of groups that choose to live together. Many people anymore don't choose to get married with a state thing, they might be a couple, but they, you can have five couples, you could have a lot of different applications of that. But so, this is basically putting some guardrails back onto the properties, and I was asked, well, what about when there's twelve people in the house? That would mean twelve unrelated individuals. Because you could have more, you could have twelve people, maybe some of them are married or a child of somebody, but if you had twelve, it still is complaint-driven, so somebody would need to complain. And by the way, we get complaints on these houses, I've driven by a handful of them. There might be seven, nine, ten cars out, that's kind of standard anymore because we have such a housing crisis. So, this, by putting ten unrelated individuals, is making an effort to not criminalize the desperation that people and businesses are in. I realize how hard that is on the parking in a neighborhood. But, when we have it, next slide, please. This is, again, the allowable districts where it's permitted, so this is right off our table. Up, you know, up to ten unrelated adults, along with related adults. You know, everywhere there's a P, that's just an over-the-counter piece. Everywhere there's a U, you have to go get a use permit. But this is, this would be eliminating the opportunity for an excess of building like that, that's clearly more like a, I would say, a boarding house or an employee dormitory building. We can find a way to make that happen, I plan to look at that, but it should always, in my view, have, require a permit and a public hearing. So, that is my bill in a nutshell.
I guess, can planning come up, please? I'll suspend the rules. I have a question. Because it sounds like the objective here is to prevent these large...
Houses without, these are basically employee dormitories that we saw there.
Right, right, but so, I mean, it said one out there in Princeville. I'm a little concerned, because I personally know of families right now that are more than ten people living in a house, just because they cannot find houses.
This is more than ten unrelated adults in addition to the related.
In addition to the related?
Yeah, that's how it's intended to be, and that's the discussion.
I guess the question, I know, is this thirty-six bedroom, single-family residence? Is that a thirty-six bedroom, single-family residence?
Correct.
Two parking stalls.
But they're, hang on, they're not connected?
They're elevated in a manner that they all have to egress and function together.
What do you mean?
So, if there is a proposal for separate units on the ground, then yeah, it would be denied. But what the department has been doing for some time now, several years now, is the, well, pod dwellings became an issue several years ago, where there are families requesting to get pod dwelling developments, that the department was interpreting as, on the ground, you cannot have those structures because they function separate and apart. But from an interpretation standpoint, the architects proposed, oh, if we elevate the structures so that they all interact with the kitchen, and there's only one kitchen serving them, then that functions as a single dwelling unit. And so, that's how that was permitted.
Maybe we got to fix that. That is probably what we got to fix, and not putting a cap, I'm concerned, but putting a cap, but I look at this, and I haven't been down there since they completed it, so I haven't seen the air conditioning units and all of that, but I have been down there when it looked like this. To me, just as a layperson, that is not a single-family residence. That is, that's multifamily right there. I mean, that's, so maybe we got to fix that.
That's one approach, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because the problem here is not about the capacity, it's, the problem is, we don't want communities to start looking like this.
So, I have a little follow-up, and I did, you know, have some dialogue with the residents of the building recently. So, when I looked at it with the people who put it in there, I only saw one kitchen, I was told there was one kitchen. The residents say there is actually six kitchens in there. So, I noticed that the current definition got rid of the number of kitchens. But every one of these is an individual unrelated to the rest.
Correct.
So, this, to me, is an extreme stretch of a single-family residence. Is it correct that this could be put in Wailua House Lots as a random example? Somebody buys a lot, they could put this in Wailua House Lots. They could take this design and put it in Wailua House Lots. What would change that?
I don't think there's a lot in Wailua House Lots that could accommodate from a setback in lot coverage standpoint. So, setback in lot coverage of residential lots would generally prevent large, massive, massive structures from being proposed. But in essence, if a lot is large enough to accommodate that size, then in theory, it could go into a residential lot.
My house and my neighbor's house is large enough. Third of an acre, half an acre, it would be large enough.
I'm not familiar with your lot.
And then, I just think it's also interesting, when you look at this juxtaposed, our next one on wildland urban interface, this is absolutely a burnable structure right here. You know, so...
Well, I don't think you're, the draft bill on the...
Mine isn't about that.
Sorry.
But I'm just trying to look at, like, what we are allowing. So, this would be allowable, and I think it would hurt the form and character of a neighborhood. And this, is it correct, let me ask you this, if somebody had an acre, could they put a hundred?
Well...
Could they put two hundred if they had two acres?
Are, is that the que, I mean...
Yeah, is it, because the single-family residence could have two hundred bedrooms and even two hundred kitchens.
Regardless, there's a form and character issue, clearly, with what was approved in Princeville. And there's no regulations from a form and character standpoint that the department could deny that application. The use of that structure in Princeville is definitely by unrelated individuals. But I also want to be clear that the unrelated individual measure would prevent the Princeville situation from happening because those are employees in there. The ten related won't necessarily prevent a proposal of a large structure from happening, rightly. You can still propose a very large structure and multiple structures on a platform. All that, the mechanism proposed in this draft bill prevents is from unrelated people living in those structures. Those structures can still be proposed. And so, that's what I mean.
Okay.
If you're talking about a form and character standpoint, there are ways to get at that, whether you're looking at...
I think kind of, that's the thing. This right here, this bill passed, they wouldn't be able to fill up those thirty-six bedrooms.
Correct.
So, they wouldn't build it.
Correct.
But it wouldn't prevent, I guess I'm struggling with the fact that, the fact that the mere putting them on a platform allows them to have a sing, get that single-family dwelling or single-family residence designation, I think for me is troubling. That is what it is, just to kind of show.
A little clarifying question, I heard that this project, particular project, has six kitchens.
I just said that, yes, I just heard that.
I got to double-check, I'm not, well, I knew that the thrust of this bill is to address what happened in Princeville. The main analysis of the bill was like, okay, how would this affect the built environment as a whole? So, I'll be honest, I don't know the facts intimately off the top of my head for Princeville kitchen situation.
We'll, you know, we'll send over a formal...
Because my question, if they have six kitchens, and that means they have density for six units, right? Because units are based on kitchens. And then, if we followed this ten-person rule, then essentially, they could have sixty individuals on the property if they have six kitchens and...
No, but if they had six kitchens, how would they qualify for a single-family residence?
It would be a multifamily situation.
Right, no longer is it a single-family residence.
Yeah, and that's why I'm...
And they take Princeville out of it, I'm just saying, generally speaking, if you, because earlier you said, as long as they have a shared area, whatever, the kitchen, but if you're saying there's six kitchens in this, in a project, then it's no longer a single-family residence.
Oh, no, no, yeah, and I'm sorry, I wasn't here prepared to talk about the Princeville enforcement case, because there was an enforcement case against that Princeville building by our zoning enforcement folks. So, there is a case, I'm familiar with it, but I wasn't prepared to be like, to talk in-depth on the Princeville, so I can, I can provide a brief...
No, I'm just taking that specific project out. If Mel Repose came in and wanted to get a similar project and have, you know, six or eight of these containers converted to households, but I have one kitchen, I can do it as a single-family residence.
Yes.
But what if I had six kitchens?
It would be a multifamily.
Correct. So, how can a project such as that one, and we can send over a formal request, if there's multiple kitchens, they should not be classified as a single-family?
No, and that's why I might have, I might have spoken wrongly, it might have been a multifamily.
I don't want to get into what's going on out there. I'm just trying to figure out what is the objective, what's the best way to get there? If the objective is to not have these projects, then let's fix that and not try to just cap it, because you cap it, you're not ending, you could do a smaller-scale project in a neighborhood. I don't like this, I don't like it in a neighborhood. Mr. Cleveland?
So, the glaring thing, when you look at this, it says, this is an example of a permitted thirty-six-bedroom, single-family residence within a residential area. So, in any logical definition of single-family residence, you're saying one kitchen. Are you saying any amount of bedrooms? I mean, thirty-six bedrooms seems ridiculous.
Right now, the code, there's no restrictions on bedrooms. It could be capped in the code.
When you say right now, did it ever, was there a limit, and then it was taken away? I mean, because at what point then are you talking about, like, in Oahu, they have this monster homes, right? And then, we have that monstrosity in Kapaa across the old Otsukas, I don't know if ever was even completed, it looks uncompleted, but it's a monstrosity, right? And so, it looks like a monster home. So, that's many, many bedrooms, probably, and whether it's rented out separately in long-term or short-term, who knows? But shouldn't we have a basic rule right in there that clarifies that once and for all? No one would think that there should be thirty-six bedrooms in a single-family household anywhere on this planet, I don't think, or ninety-nine out of a hundred people.
No, yeah, the, you know, when you look at some of the town courts and the work that's been done with farm-based code, right, that specifically looks at scaling of neighborhoods and says, there are maximum buildable footprints. Your buildings can be only so big. So, in the farm-based code situations, you will never get this scenario because of the fact that it looks at the form and character of the building in and of itself. In the Euclidean zoning districts, there is no farm-based code, and absent a definition that limits the specific amount of bedroom counts, there's nothing a planning tech can do to say like, I mean, we can all look at it, like, it's thirty-six rooms, that's excessive, but there's no legal authority for that planning tech to be like, it doesn't look like a single-family dwelling, therefore, I'm going to deny it.
So, you said absence of a definition.
Yep.
So, we just need a bill that has a definition that has a number of bedrooms? I mean, granted, they could be something more than that, more than ten bedrooms or whatever, but that would be a different category. Maybe we want to start allowing monster homes or...
Yeah, so Department of Health deals with this issue in talking about septic systems, right? And the fact that five bedrooms require, I guess, a maximum on septic system. So, things that, and that's clear in their rules. Now, say, council or the county as a whole wanted to follow that program. The applicant's response then is, well, I'm not going to call it a bedroom in the plans. And what Department of Health runs into is, there are rooms that are not being called bedrooms, and therefore, they've been put in a situation, a scenario now, where they're just going to say, you require a, the maximum septic system is going to be allowed for any bedroom room or bedroom light room. And so, all the offices, the storages, the living rooms are potentially classified as bedrooms, and restricts the size. And, you know, that's an approach that we can definitely take as a county. It just, you know, it then has its own issues in implementation, if you will.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Scotty? Thank you, thank you, Chair. Scotty?
So on page four, it says, family means an individual or group of two or more people living together in a single residential unit. So that's really open-ended. You can have a hundred. Um, we definitely, I know of families that have had fifteen kids or more. They tend to crowd in well, but like if somebody had a lot of capacity and they have fifteen kids, there's nothing in this change that brings it back towards the ordinance of stopping having a fifteen-bedroom house or sixteen-bedroom house, correct?
Correct.
Because of that. And if we had fifteen kids and they were married and they had a couple of kids of their own and they needed a home that was big enough for thirty-five people, there's nothing in my changed ordinance that would stop that. Is that correct?
Well, I think if you had, if you had.
If I have thirty-five related people.
Yeah, you know, so if you have fifteen kids and they all live in the same house, and those fifteen kids would go on to start families of their own to live in that same house, I believe under the draft bill, that the planning department would have to enforce on that as a violation because the spouses of the children are not related to each other. So now you have, or, so to say, if they're not married but they're partners, then we would have to enforce.
But let's just say there's a family of thirty-five that are all related by blood, adoption, or marriage. They could live in a single-family house.
Correct.
Yes, and they could have a large, super-large kitchen. Any of these places like this, the pictured house, could have even a large commercial kitchen that has a buffet twice a day, right? That would work. You know, you could have one kitchen for a very large house.
Correct.
You could. So large families could, you have thirty-five people in a family, they could all live in a pod house. And, you know, and under this definition, maybe ten of them haven't married their partner yet, or it's a, it's a friend of a kid or something. This is really expansive.
No, it, 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 as I say, I'm not, I'm not here to say what the Department of official position is on. We're still digesting it. Um, you know, there are pros. It prevents the potential of monster-type homes because the use, as the thing Chair pointed out, then the, the businesses would not set up employee dormitories, if you will, in a residential neighborhood. But also has its cons, right? I mean, there are situations of roommates living with each other because of the housing crisis. You have situations like domestic victims, uh, group facilities that are classified as single-family dwellings with more people than this that would make them in violation and, and our enforcement folks would have to shut those operations down.
And, and did they shut those people down when they've been existing in that same condition for twenty-five years with an even more restrictive?
Well, we never received a com- we never received a complaint, and so our office is complaint-driven. And so, so when we looked at, you know, the potential three or four years ago, getting complaint on these facilities, it was like that, that would be an issue. Um, so I'm just saying there's pros and cons. From an enforcement and implementation side, you know, how much we could actually enforce on the unrelated is, it depends on how much the landlord would push back on us, right? Because the burden is upon the planning department to demonstrate that in fact they aren't unrelated. And, you know, getting warrants to get DNA swabbed of individuals.
Right.
Um, anyways.
Yeah, that, that, again, I go back to what I said. If the objective is to prevent these types of dwellings, these structures to be in residential, then that's where we need to address. Because you're never going to be able to get a warrant for a planning violation, I can assure you. So, but anyway, Mr. Cullin.
So elevated, yeah, I mean.
Put your mic.
Elevated and then, what is it, concrete?
Uh, just actually elevated post-it period at least four feet high, I think.
Just for clarification, you know, the difference again in, in use.
Elevating it and having all of the tenants funnel through and function with one single kitchen is how the pod dwelling review has been done for several years now.
So that's the, the difference.
Yeah.
I, I have one more.
Go ahead.
So in this one, let's say that there is a kitchen in each of those sets of six. So if there are six kitchens here, then this could be said to be a multifamily dwelling.
Correct.
So a multifamily dwelling, does that require a public hearing?
No.
Multifamily, um, a six-house piece wouldn't require that. Would it require more than two parking spaces?
Yes.
Does this have more than two parking?
Again, again, I don't want to, I don't want this to become an investigation into Princeville. This is not about Princeville. This is about, this bill impacts islandwide, countywide, not Princeville. So let's be very careful.
I'm just showing this as an example of the problem.
Right, the example is fine because it, you made your point, and that's what got me engaged. But I don't want this to be a, a whole interrogation, investigation of, of that specific development because the bill is not, is for everyone. So we, we can definitely have a briefing on Princeville at a, at a separate time. I'm not sure if there's act, anything active. I'm not asking you to respond, but if there's some active enforcement or investigations, then obviously we do an executive session. But this bill is not about Princeville. This bill is for the island. So we just got to be very careful.
Thank you, because I'm just saying, my understanding of how, um, our definitions as they are now defined on page four, I don't see any reason why this couldn't happen on any piece of land the right size without any kind of public hearing to talk about left-hand turn lanes, parking, community reaction. Um, there's, there's nothing that limits that, and I had originally put this, I had two, two pieces in the same bill, and it seemed easier to separate them.
I am in agreement with you. I am in total agreement with you. It definitely needs to be addressed. Absolutely. Absolutely. Any more questions for planning? Thanks. If not, thank you. Uh, while the rules are suspended, is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify, Mr. Seikos? And again, this will be going to the Planning Commission and it'll be vetted there, and then it'll come back to us when they're done, so.
Uh, for the record, Lonny Seikos. Now, we, we need to do some work on our permitting process. And so I've picked up people, and I realize this is not about the Princeville thing, but it's my point. I've picked up people who were walking down the road carrying groceries, right? They don't have a car. They live in that, what is it, thirty-unit house?
Six.
Thirty-six-unit house. They tell me that from the time it opened, day one, every three units has its own kitchen. They also told me that from day one, in many of the units, the toilets didn't work, and the water that came out of the pipes wasn't drinkable. Uh, some of the units, the toilets worked. Some of the units had good, apparently potable water. They also told me that the county chose to waive all of the final inspections.
Okay, again.
And thus, my point in this is, our whole process of permitting this doesn't work for me, the public, sitting out here. So one of the things that this brings up is that what that appears to me to be is an apartment complex. And so perhaps the county needs to devote some time to look at how to make it easier to build an apartment complex because it's perfectly easy to build a hundred-unit house. Perfectly easy. Building a hundred-unit apartment building is a lot more complex. So we need to look at that. You also run into federal housing issues. But one of the things that we desperately need are dorm, worker dormitories, which have all different kinds of names. They, basically, a lot of that got outlawed by the federal government because they were fire traps. There's a single stairway going up in the middle. You got two long wings, it lights on fire, everybody gets killed. And so the restrictions on building dormitories are very real, but you can build dormitory housing. And so for our jobs where the people just constantly rotate, whether they're ag workers or visitor industry, the county needs to facilitate businesses being able to create worker dormitories. And that's basically what that thirty-six unit is. And a worker's dormitory would be much cheaper than an apartment building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hart?
Well, I realize, for the record, Bruce Hart, I realize that, um, we've got a long ways to go, but I want to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Cowden. I think it takes a lot of courage to tackle some of these issues. I'm often disappointed because council members don't tackle some of these type of issues. So I'm encouraged by council chairs that he is in agreement with, that we need to address this. And so there's a lot of work to do. And I hope that all the council members will support Councilmember Cowden in having pursued this. And you'll work through it and will come up with some kind of workable solution. Because this type of legislation, you have to look at everything. As Chair said, it's going to affect the entire island, every single neighborhood. And there are in this world people who will take advantage. That's, I think that's what Councilmember Cowden is referring to. There are people that are going to take advantage. I don't want to see one in the house pops. That's where I live. I mean, as Mr. Seikos said, you know, are we going to allow Kalapaka villages, you know, which have a purpose, they have a place in the right zoned area, but am I going to wake up one day, you know, and there's going to be one in my backyard? We have a housing problem. There are, I have ideas, but there are other ways to address this than what we see down in Princeville. So we have to stop it, and we have to figure out other ways to accommodate housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not a call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Ms. Holland?
Um, thank you very much for all the work on this. I think, um, that the examples that we've seen are shocking and something should be done. I am, um, I have been doing a lot of work on the sober home issue that we have and the fact that we're struggling to have, um, like the women in need house just closed and stuff like that. So I would, I would only just say that that needs to probably be looked into about where and how, maybe like specific information that, um, or specific exemptions or allowances for houses in, um, situations of sober rehabilitation, those kind of things. So I'm just, I'm just flagging that. But, um, yeah, I appreciate the effort of everybody trying to look at ways that we can, um, prevent these kind of things.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Cullin.
So thank you for bringing that up, and I definitely have looked at reentry in sober homes, and there are state regulations that don't just allow them anywhere, so they do go through a use permit process. Um, and so something like this, even though, you know, if it was larger, it still would have to go through a use permit process. It couldn't just simply go as a single-family residence. So I, I share all those ideas and challenges and looking at all of it. And I do have, you know, further bills that seem to be more complicated, that take a lot more time, so it was recommended to separate them. Both, um, re-establishing single-family residences, and then very soon I'll have some things dealing with the, the larger houses, because I recognize that they're needed. And even when we have, you know, plantation camps or whatever else comes up, there is a need for worker housing. And, um, that isn't individual permanent units. So, um, yeah, thank you, and I hope to get your support to let it go on to the Planning Commission, and very soon you'll see some other ideas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, yeah, I definitely hope we can get this to the Planning Commission. Thank Ms., uh, thank you, Ms. Cullin, for bringing this up. I think while this bill, really what this bill is, is, is redefining family as it relates to housing. That, that's what it does, right? That's the extent of, uh, in an, in an attempt to limit the size of, of a structure. Well, again, um, I, I think it will do that for sure, but it will also, I think we all, all of us um, know some family that, that takes care of a lot of people, non-related. Um, you know, I, I, right now with the crisis that we're in with housing, you know, you have homeless parents that are living in their cars and their kids are staying with friends and not necessarily family, and they would be impacted. Um, so I think there's some unintended consequences with this. Rather, I think, as Mr. Kualii talked about, you know, let's go after what we really want to go after. We don't want monster homes on Kauai. We don't. We don't want them in residential areas. I don't, definitely don't want those things in my neighborhood. So how do we, how do we fix the permitting process? And, you know, I am not against dormitory housing for employees. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Uh, so let's create that opportunity for, for employers to build dormitories for their employees. But let's call it what it is. Let's not build a thirty-six-unit container home farm and say that's a single-family residence, because that's not what it is. So I, I am definitely kind of, we'll, we'll, we'll get together and figure out how we can, uh, move forward on that, that track as well because I think it's important that we, um, address the issue of the monster home issues. Honolulu, you know, they, they, we, we can learn a lot from what they did and how they accomplished what they did. Uh, with that, the motion is to, go ahead.
I just want to say, we only had three years that it's the way the ruling is now, the way the statute is now, with no guardrails on what is a single family. Only three years. What this did is double what has been standard for a very long time. A very long time it's been five unrelated adults. This has real, increased it to ten, and again, that is, um, complaint-driven. Somebody would have to complain. So this is bringing it back to what was, but doubling what was. And what was still yet gets lots of complaints, and even I see fire is in here in neighborhoods all over the place where they are densely packed. Fire truck probably couldn't really get down those roads with how they're, um, parked on either side of the road. This makes it even more strong than it, it was before in terms of that particular burden. Um, it's just putting a guardrail on it.
Thank you. Anything else? If, oh, go ahead, Mr. Bulusan.
Uh, I'd just like to thank the introducer for this bill. Um, it, it definitely has caused me to think philosophically personally what is family, um, and then what is, what is form and character, and what is, what was our community actually want and want to experience. Um, and so I'm hoping that that discussion is really dealt into if it passes today at the Planning Commission because it, it's a much bigger and broader, this is a giant, it's a big change. This and, and I, I think that the discussion needs to include the community, and so hopefully, um, the community can get involved in this discussion.
Thank you. With that, the motion is to refer to the Planning Commission. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bulasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kualii.
Aye.
Council Chair Repulso.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, uh, I apologize. We're going to take a caption break. I know you guys have been here all day. I appreciate you guys' patience. We'll take a ten-minute caption break.
I appreciate you guys' patience. We'll take a 10-minute caption break. Meeting called back to order. Can we have Bill Number 2961, please?
On page five, Bill Number 2961 Draft One, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter Eight and Chapter 10 Kauai County Code 1987 as amended relating to the Plantation Camp District wildfire and wildland urban interface.
Want to approve?
Second.
With that, I also suspend the rules. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify? We had a lot of discussion in the last, at the last meeting. Is there anyone here that wants to testify? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion?
Did they, did they miss it?
Oh.
Were you guys interested in testifying on Bill 2961?
That's the...
Urban, wildland urban interface?
Fire.
Okay, okay. I'll suspend the rules.
For the record, Juan Saicos, so after last week and having read all of this, one of the things I'm confused about is this wildfire interface is for two projects, if I understand correctly. But we have a countywide problem. Is it the intention of the council that with the rules being created for these two subdivisions, plantation camp housing, whatever you want to call it, is this the model for the future development? And if it's not the model for future development, why is it the model for this development? So I realize that the county needs to deal with this issue. But my question is, is this going to be the model for the future, for everything? Like, I live in house lots, so it would theoretically be possible to go through all permitting and move into Bette Midler's land, although it's nature reserve or whatever. I'm just using that as an example. So if house lots expanded, would the new expansion need to meet these wildfire requirements? Or an expansion of housing in Koloa or anywhere on the island? Is this a blueprint for the future development or is this a one-off activity? Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
For the record, Bruce, sorry. Mr. Saico's question was one of my questions, too, is I'm not understanding that if it spans beyond the original footprint, then are the same rules going to apply? And then my other is a comment. The gentleman that was here representing one of these projects, he said, and excuse me, I don't recall his name right now, but anyhow, I know you know who I mean. He had a suggestion. He, he actually said, if I understood him correctly, that they would like to provide a project that was 100% affordable housing. I don't know if you remember that. But I don't, you know, I have a limited understanding of this type of legislation. But that really appealed to me. Why not give it to him? I would hope it would encourage other private property owners that wanted to create a 100% affordable housing? I mean, if I was, I would be inclined to say, go ahead. I mean, we have a, a housing crisis. And if they want to do that and they want to manage that, then give them what they need in order to be able to do that and the government steps aside. Anyhow, so I hope he's listening, you know? Again, there might be an issue I don't understand about that, but I like it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep, sure.
Hello, Howard Green, Representative Kayne Robinson. Yeah, we are listening. And we are very supportive of this bill and we've done a lot of work with Planning Department and, and you folks and very much in support of it.
Apologies.
No, no. I just worry, is that like something coming or what? When it's coming from the emergency management guy, then you gotta, you gotta be concerned. By the way, that's one bowl of soup for the county council that you could, you could drop off at any time. Sorry about that.
No problem. And I, I believe BBCP is also supportive of it, their representative, oh, still here. Anyways, so that's all we have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, we'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Ms. Holland?
I have.
I mean, Ms.
Cowden, can, can I have?
Cowden.
Can I, can I appear for just a moment?
Sure. We'll suspend the rules.
This is very simple. This is very simple, so I hate to bring you all up. Just kind of making it clarified relative to some of what we just heard. This is for four plantation camps, not two. Kaua, Mekani, Banui, Pakala, and New Mila. My question is, based on what the testifier said, and I, I think I kind of asked this before, is this intended to be, right now it's just for the plantation camp overlay, correct?
Yeah. Klein and Hall, behalf of the Planning Department, joined by Fire Chief Gibson and Kima Administrator Elgin Shu. Correct. The ordinances before, the ordinance before you folks today is, is specific to the plantation camps.
And it's specific to that because it's typically right in the middle of some wildlands and, and an area where we just had a big fire as well.
Correct. We were in the process of the plantation camp upzoning proposal that stems from the West Kauai Community Plan. And in the middle of that, you know, the Kaua'akani fire happened and a lot of the fire specialists folks were saying, the built environment folks need to be at the table on this. And so that's where the discussions progressed to say that, okay, if we're looking at upzoning an area that is almost just burned, we need to fold in measures that can mitigate for any new development there against wildfire impacts.
While I would understand this work, very quality work, and we're like first in the nation kind of coming up with this? Or almost first in the nation?
No, I'll be clear, a lot of this is tried and tested standards in other wildfire areas in the country. Hawaii doesn't have a wild, there's no county in Hawaii that has a wildland urban interface. And Chief Kirk, there are other Wui's out there.
Austin, Mike Gibson, Fire Chief, for the record. Austin Fire Department initiated a Samui Coast Wildland Urban Interface several years ago, and I believe they were one of the first in the nation.
And then so in terms of this being a template for what might be expected for new builds in other places on the island, my guess is maybe this would influence some of it or could be recommended. But is there, at least at this point, any intention of creating these requirements on houses in a town?
The focus is the camps. Having said that, you know, the, much of the policies within it were extracted from the IBHS or the Institute for Insurance for Business and Home Safety, which is one of the primary organizations that looks at wildfire. Much of these proposals were taken from their baseline standards.
Can you say the name of that one more time?
IBHS.
And say what it is?
The Institute for Insurance for Business and Home Safety. Is that correct? Did I get that right? I believe that's what the acronym stands for. And they have different proposals and policies for homeowners to consider in order to just maintain risk, or maintain insurance. And the home hardening requirements, much of them were gleaned from IBHS's baseline studies. The concrete band around the house was not. That's kind of more new on that front, but definitely worked through much of the national wildfire folks that we work with. And then I think what Fire Chief was talking about, that you don't generally see in a lot of codes, is the annual programming standpoint, the fact that the tenants will have to attend workshops once a year and that clean up. That's kind of relatively new. If we were to go out for any type of wildfire urban inter, or wildland urban interface code for other parts of the island or the whole island, it would necessitate really community outreach and engaging the communities on what might be best methods for those particular areas, given their geographical location, as well as what the community input is. There clearly is a cost associated with this. And when dealing with a housing crisis and the cost of construction, you know, those costs are not lost on any of us. And we think being able to work with these landowners to get the improvements and the cost benefit analysis done was pivotal. But yes, as long as what approach I'm saying, it would depend on community outreach and engagement of community.
Okay, I guess I have a question for Elton, for Director Ushio Kima. Boy, what a past couple few days across the country for disasters. So this urban interface piece, would you see that that will probably be helpful for a number of the different things? I don't think we're going to have dust storms over here or tornadoes. But I mean, it seems like a lot of this is, it's got multiple positives.
Elton Ushio, Emergency Management Administrator. Yes, you know, you can take things and apply it to other potential threats. But I think, you know, specific, if we're talking wildfire, I think one theme that I see that I really like is that, you know, you've heard Kima in our outreach. We say that preparedness and resiliency are everybody's kulianau. It starts at the individual household levels. And this does, this does just that. It shares responsibility and it makes us much better prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Kaina, this was clearly designed for the plantation camps. But that doesn't prevent the Planning Department or the planning director as if a subdivision request came in and there was some risk of wildfire, that you could actually implement some of these safety measures in the permitting requirements at the planning department, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else seen that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing? Oh, you already had your public testimony. We call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion, Ms. Allen?
I want to just thank everybody who's put all this work into it. I really want to thank the large landowners that are willing to do this and to consider it. And why had him restate Institute for Insurance on Business and Home Safety? As I watched a whole new round of disasters just over the past few days, I'm hoping, it's hard to get an insurance person willing to come in and do a briefing. But the amount of impacts on our insurance, I think, I worry that to some level we'll have to, we'll have to start implementing some of these. I worry just because there's other interests like food security and neighborhood food production. But when I look at how much damage is happening across the country that share the same insurance companies, I believe insurance will be one of those things that even if the planning department doesn't put it in there, I think that the ability to get insurance will be an issue. And so that's, I've been kind of bringing that up for a number of years in even our fire flow protection and the challenges in our more remote areas in the back of valleys and things like that. So I'm fully supportive of this, particularly because we have the active input from the impacted property owners.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I also just want to echo, I think this is really important and I'm really grateful for all the work that's gone into this. I think really this is part of an emergency response to a situation that we found ourselves in due to 150 years of changes to our landscape. And really, in an ideal situation, we would restore our ecosystems, our wetlands, our coastal forests, and we'd have managed farmlands that are managed. But post-plantation, we've seen the establishment of all these invasives and we have to do something. And this is something. And even given the radically changing climate and atmosphere and all the impacts that we're dealing with, these kind of fires are going to become more and more prevalent. So it's a great forward step to save lives. And I just want to, yeah, just echo that and the gratitude and thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Kanashiro?
I'm just going to say I'll be voting in favor of it. I really like the type of defensible space and how well thought out the bill was, what type of construction requirements they're going to put on, all while minding the cost of what it would cost a homeowner to do. You know, so I think it's very forward thinking on our part to be doing this, especially in a plantation camp type area where we just saw recent fires near. And you know, with those areas, you can create those defensible spaces though. You know, spaces within like even 100 feet of the homes. So it makes sense for this type of project and I'll be voting in favor of it.
Mr. Bolosan?
I just want to echo, I will be voting in favor also. Again, I just applaud the administration and all the collaboration with all the organizations for being creative on this solution. It actually triggered me to walk around a couple of premises to make sure that we're doing all the things necessary to make sure our spaces are safe. And I hope that inspires others to do the same.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Cavallo?
Just totally, totally supportive of everything that we have on the table. It's not if it's going to happen, it's when. And so I think the layout and everything we have right before us is already prepared. And just wanted to put my mind on when they understand that it is important and totally supportive. That's it.
Anyone else? If not, thank you to the planning department. And more importantly, thank you to the landowners, the two landowners. Because as Kaina said, your cooperation and participation was pivotal. If not for that, we're not here today. So thank you, guys, both of you that are here. There's still some other bills hanging that we hope to use that same cooperation and collaboration and making sure, the ultimate goal here is, yes, safety, public safety. But the byproduct of this is housing. It's housing. And we all strive for housing. So I'm optimistic that we'll get everything done and we'll get those things up and running. So thank you to all that participated. With that, the motion is to approve. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kauden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuuli'i?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item?
Next item on page six, Bill number 2963, a bill for an ordinance amending Kauai County General Plan 2018 relating to a parcel located in Waiheaua, Kauai.
Vote to receive.
Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none? Oh, with that, I'll suspend the rules.
For the record, Juanis Saicos. Again, like I read all of this several times, sat through the last meeting. So here's what I don't understand. Is we're amending the general plan, which I get, and we're going to formalize the permanency of the plantation camp and in some instance, move its location? And I'll go fast forward through this. And others, it appears that we're increasing the amount of land in a new location that housing can be built on.
Mr. Saicos, the motion to receive means we're killing it. So this is going away.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, we're not, I don't mean to interrupt, but I...
No, no, thank you for interrupting. My comments are meaningless because of what you guys are going to do. Thank you very much.
We knew your position, so we decided to, because of you, we're just going to kill it.
Good, good going. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else seeing none? Call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? The motion is to receive. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kauden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And 2964?
Bill number 2964, a bill for an ordinance amending the state land use district boundary relating to a parcel located in Waiheaua, Kauai.
Vote to receive.
Second.
It's the same thing, Mr. Second Parcel. With that, anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none? Call them, any further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kauden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuuli'i?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
With that, can you read us into executive session, please?
This is ES 1152 pursuant to Kauai statute sections 92-4, 92-5, 84 and Kauai County Charter section 3.07E. The Office of the County Attorney requests an executive session to provide a briefing and request authority to participate in the global settlements with the following parties. Purdue Pharma LP, Sackler Parties, Alvin Incorporated, Amneal Pharmaceuticals LLC, Apotix Corp., Hikma Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated, Indivior Incorporated, Mylan, also known as Biarchtris Incorporated, Sun Pharmaceuticals Industries Incorporated, Zytus Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated and Santos Incorporated. This briefing and consultation involves the consideration of the powers, duties, privileges, immunities and reliabilities of the council and the county as they relate to the national opioid settlement. ES 1153 pursuant to Kauai statute sections 92-4, 92-5, 84 and Kauai County Charter section 3.07E. The Office of the County Attorney requests an executive session with the council to provide the council with a briefing and request authority for a possible settlement proposal in a claim filed by the Mayor Hewn and Barber for Laura Nishikuni and related matters. This briefing and consultation involves the consideration of the powers, duties, privileges, immunities and reliabilities of the council and the county as they relate to this agenda item.
Who wants to go into executive session?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none? Motion is to go into executive session. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kauden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuuli'i?
Aye.
Councilchairpozo?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
With that, let's reconvene in executive session chambers in five minutes.
Hi Carol, we'll be back soon.
Call a meeting back to order, Mr. Bracken.
Matt Bracken, County Attorney. ES 1152 and 1153 were both held regarding active litigation cases. The discussion needs to remain confidential and nothing needs to be discussed to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, there is no further business on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.